Good evening. The town clerk reports that there are 106 town meeting members present representing the quorum. The annual meeting for the Town of Adams is convened. The town clerk will read the return of the constable.
Board of Selectmen, Adams, Massachusetts, May 7, 2024. I have served the foregoing warrant by posting in three places in said Town of Adams true and attested copies thereof, seven days at least before time of holding said meeting. Thomas A. Satko, Constable, the Town of Adams.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions this evening. To my right, for the Board of Selectmen, Chairman John Duval, Vice Chairman Christine Hoyt, newly elected Selectman Anne Bartlett, and Joseph Novak. Absent this evening is Richard Blanchard. We also have Town Administrator Jay Green and Crystal Lilladelt, Finance Director, Town Accountant. To my left, Town Clerk Haley Meswore, Finance Committee Chairman Jay Meswore, and Edmund St. John, Town Council. The Town of Adams has been fortunate for over 50 years to have a member of the St. John family as our Town Council. Mr. St. John III has been with us over 20 years, and this is his last town meeting with us, so thank you, Mr. St. John. I'd like to introduce the newly elected precinct members, their first annual meeting, from Precinct 1 Fred Laura, Precinct 2 Erica Durgenti and Val Masiars, Precinct 3 Chad Worley and Peter Wagner, Precinct 4 Tyler Bazillion, Precinct 5 Daniel Longjavin. Thank you all. And at this time, I'd like all town meeting members to please be in the black seats in the center. Thank you. As we begin this evening, before we do the call of the warrant, I'd like to make known to you, there are some Scribner's errors in the books that you received. If you would look at Article 7, page 13, in the explanation portion of the article under "Fees on Maturing Debt," your book reads $32,000 for the fee on the maturing debt. It should read $20,000. The interest is currently reading $20,000 in your book. It should read $12,000. I want to be clear that those errors do not change the final numbers in your book. If you would look at page 29, that article has a comment that the FY '25 proposed request did take you to look at Article 22. That was an error. It should have been Article 24. And as you came in this evening, you were given page for the recapitulation sheet at the back of your book. I'd like you to draw your attention that in the actual fiscal '24, the change in numbers beginning with residential on the tax rate should say 1754. Those are the new numbers that are on the sheet that you received. Those are actual numbers for fiscal '24, and that the shift is 30% for both fiscal year '24 and '25. Any questions? All right. Let me see what else I have to talk about here. Okay. Microphones. If you have questions, comments, please come to the microphone here. If you are unable to get to the microphone, we certainly can get one to you. Amendments. Any town meeting member wishing to make an amendment to the article, the amendment must be in writing. It must be turned in to the clerk when it's time to vote. If you need pencil or paper, there are some up here on the clerk's table. At this time, the town clerk will present the scholarship recipients.
Okay. Fiscal year 2024 scholarship awards. High school scholarships. For Husick Valley High School, they're going to Gabe Bishop, Hannah Shay, and Frank Field. For McCann Tech, we have Joseph Roy. For Bart, we have Megan Charade. And then postgraduate is Tiara Karah. So we have a total of six that will be awarded this year. Thank you.
It's now time to do the annual report dedication, and it will be presented by Town Administrator Jay Green.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to annual town meeting. As you folks know, we try to think of somebody each year who has contributed to the Town of Adams betterment over a period of time, maybe a member of the community, maybe an employee. This year, we have a very unique staff member that we would like to dedicate the annual report to. This year, we'd like to dedicate the town's annual report to a staff member, an employee, but not of the human nature. This year's dedication is to K-9 Kumar. Kumar's career in law enforcement began in 2013 with his partner Sergeant Kurt Crane. Kumar served the Town of Adams until his passing in December of 2023. Kumar was trained and certified in the detection of narcotics, tracking, building searches, evidence recovery, area searches, and suspect apprehension. Over the course of Kumar's career, he helped locate narcotics that led to multiple seizures of illegal drugs and money, helped locate missing individuals, and assisted with tracking down suspects who had fled on foot from crime scenes. However, Kumar was most known for his community appearances within the local school systems with Sergeant Crane, displaying his skill set as well as teaching the importance that K-9s have within the law enforcement community. Kumar was a loyal partner and companion who watched over the Town of Adams for a decade. Thank you for your service, Kumar. You are missed. And receiving this on behalf of Kumar tonight is Sergeant Crane and Officer Mike Strizzi. Please come up, gentlemen. I think it's important for everybody to know that Kumar was the town's first, and the exceptional performance of Kumar as a K-9, but also the exceptional performance of Officer Crane, now Sergeant Crane, in his efforts have solidified. Our K-9 program is well-respected across the county and probably across most of Western Mass, if not the state. I know that Chief Kelly, when he was being recruited, was very impressed with the K-9 program and its professionalism. And with that, because of that professionalism, the dedication that Kumar had and the dedication that our officers have, the Town of Adams now has two K-9s. And I can tell you that from a cost-effective standpoint, the dedication, time, and frankly in-kind donations that Kurt and his family have provided have served the Town of Adams well. So on behalf of Kumar, thank you.
Any town meeting member wishing to hold an article, please stand, state your name and your precinct. At the end of the call of the warrant, those articles not held will be voted en masse. After that, we will take up the articles held in order. Articles 1, 2, and 3. Article 4, Compensation of Elected Officials. The Budget Articles. Article 5, Operating Omnibus Article, Mr. Cowie. Article 6, Sewer Enterprise Fund Article, Mr. Cowie. Article 7, Capital Omnibus Article. Article 8, Capital Outlay Expenditure from Stabilization Fund. Article 9, Capital Infrastructure and Equipment Outlay from Free Cash. The Regional School District Assessments. Article 10, Husick Valley Regional School District Assessment, Mr. Cowie. Article 11, Northern Berkshire Regional Vocational School District Assessment, again, Mr. Cowie. Transfer to Special Fund Articles. Article 12, Free Cash to Lower the Tax Rate. Article 13, Stabilization Fund Transfer. Article 14, Reserve Fund Appropriation. Article 15, Unpaid Bills. The Annual Authorization Articles. Article 16, Authorization to Apply for Community Block Grants. Article 17, Authorization to Apply for Community Facilities Grants. Article 18, Authorization to Accept Perpetual Care Monies. Article 19, Authorization to Borrow. Article 20, Authorized Revolving Spending -- I'm sorry -- Authorized Revolving Funds Spending Limits. Article 21, Amend Compensation Plan Check. Mr. Cowie. The Bylaw Amendments. Article 22, Vote to Amend Chapter 14-3: Dogs Required to Be Leashed Exceptions. Article 23, Vote to Amend Chapter 50: Revolving Funds.
I'd like to hold that, please.
Okay. Mr. Novak, your precinct?
Precinct 2.
Thank you. The Special Articles. Article 24, Economic Development Fund, Mr. Cowie. Article 25, Authorization to Acquire Eastmans. Article 26, Authorization to Acquire Eastmans. Article 27, Acceptance of Mass General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23D, the Mullen Rule. Article 28, Reappropriation of Quaker Meeting House Funds. Mr. Meswore, Chairman of the Finance Committee, moves the following articles. Article 1, 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 22, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Byrus. Any discussion?
Seven.
Point of order?
Article 7.
Did I say seven? I apologize. Seven should be in the mix. Again, I'm sorry. 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, 9, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 22, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29. Okay? Is that everybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. First article held is Article 5, the Operating Omnibus Article. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum or sums of money as may be necessary to defray the ordinary expenses of the town for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, or to take any other action in relation thereto, you will find the details on pages 10 and 11. Mr. Cowie, you held the article.
This thing on? Yes. All right. I have -- there's questions on two parts. The first one, and it's going to be the Graylock Glen Outdoor Center, and it ties in my questions with warrant Article 24, which I have also held. And here's my questions. We're using $80,000 to offset the -- I don't know if it is the salary, medical benefits, or whatever. The total down here is $109,581. Now, the individual who is doing this, does this amount include an amount for medical benefits, or was the individual or the individuals that are included therein, do they have medical benefits somewhere else? And the reason I ask this, I didn't have access to the adopted budget. I tried to get a copy of it. So you have a number here, and it has a bunch of items included in it. I'm not sure which ones they are, and if we're going to nitpick on trying to save money, I just want to make sure we're doing it.
Mr. Cowie, you're talking fiscal '25 personal expenses.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Green, or Crystal? Sorry.
It's okay. Yes. To answer your question, both of the Graylock Glen Outdoor Center employees have medical benefits. So there's a health insurance plan there, there's a life insurance plan there, there's Medicare match from the employer, there's workers' comp, and there's unemployment compensation for both.
They have all. Now, the individual who's the director, he retired after 30 years with the police. Wasn't he entitled to medical benefits and other benefits?
He does have benefits with the town employees, too.
So it's duplication?
Can't double dip.
No. So which ones he going to dip first?
So we're delving into protected territory because it's an individual's personal finances. That's governed by the Massachusetts retirement system, and Mr. Winn is receiving his benefits and his salary from the Town of Adams. That is what the Town of Adams provides to him. He sat down with Mr. Flynn, the Retirement Board Commission, and what Mr. Winn's deal is with his previous retirement in law enforcement is between him and the retirement laws of the Commonwealth. But from the Town of Adams standpoint, he is receiving benefits and salary like anybody else, and it is against Massachusetts general law to, as you say, double dip. So he cannot do that legally. He cannot receive that. The only way he would be able to do that is if he worked out of state.
But he could have opted not to take them from us, correct?
Yes, any employee can.
Right. Okay.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that he's entitled to receiving those benefits from his previous retirement, and I don't know those rules. And frankly, at this point, it's not necessarily that of the Town of Adams to be concerned about, because that legal obligation is on Mr. Winn.
All right. The second item is under Public Works now. In warrant Article 6, we have the sewage treatment plant. Okay, so now that's now going to be its own separate.
Okay. Mr. Cowie, we're going to stick to 5. I know you've got them both held, and they kind of join together, so if you have a question about the numbers in Article 5 and Public Works, let's address that. Once we get through Article 5, then we'll go to Article 6. I know where you want to go with this, but I don't want to blur the two articles.
Okay. I can come back, though, right? As long as it's not -- as long as we're not questioning the dollar amounts, right?
If you have a question about --
Right.
Okay. So are you done with Article 5? Because I know you want to tackle Article 6.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So let's finish Article 5 so we can vote Article 5, if you're satisfied.
Okay.
And then I'll have you come back up for 6.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns on Article 5?
Hi. Kathy Hines, thank you for giving me this minute.
And your precinct, please? Your precinct?
Precinct 5.
Thank you.
My question that I have pertains to Article 5 in the Public Health Board of Health. I noticed for fiscal year 2024, it was approved for 16-8, but for fiscal year 2025, it's recommended at 15-3. Is that set, or because if it is, why the decrease?
That's under the operating expenses, Crystal?
Yes. Happy to take it. So the decrease is because we consolidated all of our legal line items into the Town Administrator's budget. Since we're hiring a new legal firm, as we heard from Mr. St. John's retirement, we put all of our legal lines into one place so that all of the legal expenses have to run through Jay's office, so he has final approval of what's being spent on legal fees. So all, I believe it was, I don't want to say $1,200 or $1,300 in legal for Borga Health that just got moved to a different location.
Okay. So technically, we still have the money?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions on Article 5? Seeing none, Mr. Meswore, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds, as noted, the amounts showing under the heading "Fiscal Year 2025 Recommended," seconded by Mr. Borden. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to operate the sewer enterprise or to take any other action in relation thereto, you will see a table breaking down the Sewer Enterprise Fund with the recommendations for fiscal year 2025. The fiscal year 2025 recommendation of $1,201,256 will be raised as follows. Tax levy. Mr. Cowie, you held the article.
Now, the Sewer Enterprise Fund, this was previously under Department of Public Works, correct? Now, my concern is not so much with the dollars and cents here, but where it's going to be and what our function is going to be as town meeting members when we vote salaries, wages, expenses, capital outlay. Because as a sewer enterprise fund, are they going to have -- are they going to have to hire new directors or have meetings or something for how this is going to be run? And who's going to be making decisions on where the money's going? What is going to be our role? Because it's still going to be under the tax base. And my only concern is, is something going to get stuck under the rug here, and we're not going to be able to vote on it? I don't care what it is, whether it's operating expenses, debt service, personal expenses, because we're going into new territory here. I don't think we have an enterprise fund right now that is going to have as large a budget as this one.
Mr. Green?
So an enterprise fund is governed by Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 44, 53, F and a half. That is the mechanics of how to establish and manage an enterprise fund. So if you may recall, I believe, two fiscal years ago, when we did the master borrowing for the $7 million wastewater treatment plant, the Clean Water Trust, as well as the Department of Revenue, says you have to isolate those funds appropriated by town meeting for operating a sewer enterprise in order to access the very low interest rate for the loan. So we've done that. Town meeting authorized that two years ago. So that's the enterprise fund. Town meeting will always have the authority to appropriate funds within the enterprise fund. You can add maybe 15 minutes to the next year's town meeting, because you will then see personnel expenses, operating expenses, debt service, and another line item, any residue or residual funds left over from operation of the sewer enterprise. That is, if we spend, just using round numbers, 1.1 million and not 1.2, that leaves $100,000 alone in there. The intent, that $100,000 in years past, would be sent back into free cash and reappropriated again by town meeting for use for capital or for something else. In this situation, that money stays with the sewer enterprise. So you will then appropriate a request for, say, a pump, a control center, pump control center, MCCs, all those types of things. So it is isolating the $1.2 million in its own budget. You, as a town meeting member, have to approve it. So you will always see now an article, Sewer Enterprise Fund, and you will see the cost of operating the Sewer Enterprise Fund broken out, and then what we want to do with that residual. So I think what you were trying to ask for, Mr. Cowie, before is you see a reduction in Article 5. Those numbers were pulled out and now called out under Article 6. So that's how the Sewer Enterprise Fund works. The Department of Revenue has a lovely informational guideline about it. Many other communities have enterprises for different things. It's not a revolving account. The difference between a revolving account and an enterprise fund is that an enterprise fund has individual line items with it, which is why you see personal operating and debt service. It encapsulates all the costs of it, and it'll stay. And year over year over year, town meeting will approve that individual budget for that enterprise.
Right. But it is, this was the state mandating that if we wanted those funds, we had to do this.
Yes, and the Department of Revenue had, on many different occasions, including in June of 2017, recommended that the town adopt an enterprise system, and we're finally getting to it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions on Article 6? Seeing none, Mr. Meswore moves the Finance Committee recommendation that the town vote to raise and appropriate the amounts shown in the following schedule under the heading "Fiscal Year 2025 Recommended" for the personnel, operating, and debt service expenses of the wastewater treatment plant, seconded by Mr. Lennon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Article 10, the Husick Valley Regional School District Assessment. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum or sums of money as may be necessary for the operating and capital assessments of the Husick Valley Regional School District for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, or take any other action in relation thereto. The above assessment, which recommend -- the recommendation is $6,354,380, is consisting of four parts. The State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education minimum municipal contribution, or the foundation budget, $4,059,349. Additional operating assessment above the foundation, $1,192,913. Other expenditures, non-foundation transportation, $440,507. And the capital assessment, the Husick Valley High School project debt exclusion, $6,661,611, for a total of $6,354,380. The total Husick Valley Regional School District fiscal year 2025 budget is $22,481,719. This article was held by Mr. Cowie in Precinct 3, and Mr. Dean is here to answer questions.
Good evening, Mr. Dean.
Hi. How are you?
First item I want to go -- the first item I want to go to is sore point for years. The transportation budget. Now, we've got $440,507. The transportation budget, now we've got $440,507. Is this our total, or is this the total cost, including any reimbursement we get for tra, um, student transportation from the state?
That's your total after.
That's ours, okay. Now, what's the percentage this year from the government that made us a promise that they were going to do that 100%?
It's typically been between 70 and 80%. I think last year it was 72%.
So.
So, and we'll see where it lands in the next few weeks.
Right. Now, the next item, you're hat, you're adopting pathways.
Correct.
Okay, and if I read, I think it was in I Berkshires or the Berkshire Eagle, you have, you're going to have two of them.
We have two state, yep, state-designated pathways, and we have five additional pathways.
All right, now what about science and technology? What are you missing to be qualified for that?
Nothing. So we have two state-adopted ones. We have to go through an application process. And we took two on in the beginning, but we have engineering. Two of the pathways are science-based because we have environmental science and we have healthcare sciences, are the two adopted pathways.
Well, isn't this kind of like what we, what they used to do, which was called tracking? In a way, with a different name?
No, I mean, it's, it's giving students options to explore their career interests. Students don't have to pick a particular pathway, but they're given the opportunity to explore internships in each of those areas. And if they, they do determine early on that they want to be in healthcare, we can bring them through the pathway. We can get them certifications in CPR. We can give them certifications to be a paramedic. And we can get them early college courses if they're going into, into the nursing or, or other healthcare fields.
I guess, I guess where I'm coming from on this area is I think of Housick Valley as an academic school and I think of McCann as a technical vocational school. And now we're, we are not, we don't have a pathway for science and engineering, do we?
We do.
You do. What is it?
We do. It's science and engineering.
No, it's environmental sciences, it's?
No, we have, we also have an engineering pathway. So, we still have all of those courses. We just have career options for students. If you, let's think of it this way. Back when Ed Reform happened, McCann had to make shifts to their academics to, to match up more closely with what we do because of the MCAS. McCann has academics and they have vocational programs. Housick Valley maintained the academic programs, but we have a lot of students that are going directly to the workforce and we needed to create opportunity for those students. So we started exploring pathways and other ways to get students to stay engaged with school and to get them out directly into the workforce in the area. So we're making connections with businesses in the area. We're getting students internships. And that doesn't mean that they're necessarily going to go into what they decided. We had a student that graduated this year who's going off to college that did an internship in a farm and decided, I don't want to be a farmer. This is too much. So, I mean, so, so it's, it's just giving our students more opportunities and really allowing us to, to keep all students engaged.
I guess, I mean, I'm thinking more in terms of the engineering. Do you have, if I wanted to go, if I was?
We have intro to engineering. We have high-level math courses. And a lot of these pathways correspond with similar courses. Some of them still have the same exact high-level math course. So, so the pathway is simply, this is, this is a number of courses that you can go through and you can leave with, with this certify, certification that you completed this pathway. And it's, it's something for your college resume. It's something for your work resume. But it doesn't mean that they're pigeonholed into something.
Well, do you, you have calculus AB?
Yes.
Do you have calculus, I think it's, was it?
We have calculus. We have trigonometry. We have.
Do you have the second session, the second part of calculus? Is that within your engineer, your engineering program?
We have, we have everything a student needs to get through an engineering program.
Mr. Dean, excuse me, I have a point of order over here.
Oh, I'm just wondering what we're sp-
Okay, so, Mr. Cowie, a lot of these questions really should be before the school committee and, and not here. We are here to address the $6,354,380 from the Town of Adams to, so if you have a question with respect to the dollars, let's, let's have the questions.
And I want to know where we're spending it.
Okay, so Mr. Dean.
So that's what I am asking.
Mr. Dean, can you address where within these numbers, Mr. Cowie's questions?
No, we don't have to go that. All I want to know is, is I want to know that if a young man or a young girl is going to school at Housick Valley and they want to be a physicist and a astronomer or a mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, do they have all of the courses that are available?
They do have all of those courses, and we also have agreements with local colleges for college-level courses for them as well. If they want to go a certain way, they can. We have a student that just got a full boat to Harvard. I think we got plenty in terms of, in terms of curriculum.
I talked to a student that was graduating. I'm not going to say what his name was.
Okay, we have another point of order, Mr. Cowie, from the floor. Point of order from the floor. Step away. Address your point of order to the microphone, please.
Carol Cuscinetti, Precinct Five, I don't know what this has to do with the budget and I really feel strongly that these questions need to be asked at a school committee meeting or a finance committee meeting.
So, Mr. Cowie.
With all due respect.
Okay, so a point of, you know, Mr. Cowie, you understand a point of order has been made. Do you have anything further with respect to the article in the budget?
As to where the money's being spent, yes.
Specifically?
Yes, I was, I was talking to him about that. I asked this.
Again, those questions are curriculum questions to the school committee, not to the town meeting.
I, well, I don't want to make this statement, but then I think we're, we're wasting our money. We're spending $22 million and we're not getting our, our value. How many students, I have one more question.
One more question. All right, Mr. Cowie, your question.
How many students are graduating this year?
We have 40 students graduating this year.
And $22 million.
Thank you, Mr. Cowie.
And 1,100 others.
And the young man who was going to study, I'm not going to say what he's studying, but he couldn't get to the MCLA or the Williams because he couldn't make it fit his schedule. So I think we're paying an awful lot and we're not giving the kids what they need.
Thank you, Mr. Cowie.
I disagree.
Any other questions with respect to Article 10 from the audience? Seeing none, Mr. Mezwar removes the Finance Committee's recommendation that the town vote to accept the Housick Valley Regional School District Fiscal Year 2025 budget and to raise and appropriate $6,354,380, seconded by Mr. Burdick. All in favor? Opposed? The article moves. Article 11, thank you, Mr. Dean. Do I have anyone from McCann here this evening to be able to answer questions? I was going to say, way to go. I'll, I'll go right for it.
Mr. Shepley, would you be?
Mr. Shepley, if we need, if, if a question, thank you very much. Article 11, held by Mr. Cowie. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate from available funds a sum or sums of money, as may be necessary, for the operating and capital assessments of the Northern Berkshire Vocational Regional School District for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, or to take any other action in relation thereto. The breakdown for the $1,063,774, State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Minimum Contribution Foundation Budget, $939,180. Additional operating assessment above the foundation, $77,205. Number three, additional operating assessment, non-foundation transportation, $44,640. And four, capital assessment, the capital budget, $2,749, comprising the total of $1,063,774. The total Northern Berkshire Vocational Regional School District Fiscal Year 2025 budget is $12,092,886. Mr. Cowie? I, Mr. Shepley, who can answer some questions from the school committee. But he's not. I have no one from the administration. Pass. All right, Mr. Cowie withdraws. Any other questions on this article? Seeing none, Mr. Mezwar removes the Finance Committee's recommendation that the town vote to accept the Northern Berkshire Vocational Regional School District Fiscal Year 2025 budget and to raise and appropriate $1,063,774, seconded by Mr. Byrus. All in favor? Opposed? So moved, okay. Article 21, to amend the compensation plan. To see if the town will vote to amend the compensation plan as established by Section 10-5 of the Town of Adams Code of Laws or take any other action in relation thereto. You have on page 19, the Salary Administration Plan with the annual rate table for fiscal year 2025 and the Salary Administration Plan Hourly Rate Table Fiscal Year 2025. This article was held by Mr. Cowie in Precinct Three.
In the introduction to the Warren articles, as to the, um, this article, I'm assuming that there was a competitive wage adjustment. What is that? Where is it in that article? And what exactly is this? What are we talking about? Again, because I don't have any information from here as to what that is.
So, no, this is a standard 2% cost of living increase, which we've seen last several years for both the top part, which is fiscal year 25 Salary Administration Plan for salaried folks and then the hourly, non-union folks at the, at the bottom. The wage adjustment was performed for the DPW in the collective bargaining context. That's the only group that received a weight, base wage adjustment.
And that was a cost of living wage adjustment that they had never gotten before?
Base wage adjustment is not the same as a cost of living adjustment.
So what was the base wage adjustment that they got?
But they're not included in Article 21.
Where was it included?
Article Five.
Article Five?
But I, I can tell you
Okay.
that the financial impact to the base wage adjustment for the 18 unionized covered employees is $167,000 impact to the budget.
The only thing I wanted to know, because I don't, don't understand what this is, how it came about, and what it is. That's all I'm asking. What was it? What did you do?
We negotiated a union contract, as we did last year with the police department. We took salary data from about 32 other communities in the county for similar situated jobs. We took an average and we sat down at the bargaining table and attempted to bargain fair wages for our DPW staff.
So how much did, how much then did each individual get per this?
Yes.
I, I just want to know what this is and how it came about, that's all.
Well, you had, so.
Did they, did they give them like $1,000 to bring them up to scale with everybody else?
Mr. Duval?
So, just to clarify, Jay started going back to Article Five in regards to the DPW contract, which has not been approved by the select board yet. You, you held Article 21, so your question is, what has changed on Article 21, correct?
Well, no, because it's, it's not in. I assumed it was in there because that's where the compensation was. And I assumed that's where that.
Yeah, Article Five.
Yeah, because it, it doesn't say in here which article it is.
Mr. Cowie, we're on page 19. Which is, which is the Article 21 that we're talking about, the compensation plan.
And they said that, what I am asking is, I assumed that this competitive wage adjustment was within Article 21. Mr. Green has said, no, it was in Article Five. So my question is, how did this come about? What is it? Did you give everyone a pay raise in addition to their cost of living? Where did, where does it come about in our book? What part of it?
Your question is, for Article 21, the salary tables we have here, right?
You can keep going back to that. I'm going to go.
That's the article you held, right?
Right, so, Mr. Cowie, I think where we're going is this article is for the non-represented employees, both salary and hourly employees, for clarification. Article Five, which has passed.
Okay, so I'm not going to.
We're not going back, contained the information with respect to the represented workforce of the DPW. They are not included in 21.
So we're not going to go back?
We're not going to go back to Article Five. It has passed. We are, however, going to move forward with 21.
Since I voted in, for, in favor of Article Five, I'll make a motion to open it up again. Do I have a second?
There's a motion on the floor to revisit Article Five.
Point of order, can we check with legal counsel if that's something that can be done?
Since he did vote in the affirmative, I believe he can.
Vote's completed?
Revisit. Yes, because he voted in the affirmative, he can ask to revisit. Is there a second to revisit Article Five?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Novak. Okay, Mr. Cowie, give me one minute. We're going to table Article 21 for a moment. We are going to go back to Article Five. Well, you brought it up, so here we go. Article Five. What is your question specific to? Hold on. Point of order. Oh, I got to vote it. All in favor of revisiting Article Five? Opposed? Unfortunately, Mr. Cowie, the noes have it. We are not going back to Article Five. It continues. Back to Article 21. Do you have any further questions?
No.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on the compensation article? Seeing none, Mr. Mezwar removes the Finance Committee's recommendation that the town vote to accept the article as written. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Baker. All in favor? Opposed? So moved. Article 23. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 50, revolving funds to add the following revolving fund. The Graylock Glen Revolving Fund with a spending authority to the town administrator. The revenue source will be rental fees. Allowed expenses will be maintenance and upkeep of the Graylock Glen. Mr. Novak from Precinct Two, you held the article. You can talk right from there if you'd like, sir.
Okay, um, I worked a long time to put together a packet and to get to the path I want to get to, all of it will not be taken as economics. And I'm not going to proceed because I'm not going to be told that it doesn't pertain to monies. Because all stories don't play out just for money. And I worked awful hard on this to track things down, to call people, but I'm not going to bring it out into the public because our town is getting to the point, if it already isn't there, that there is no transparency whatsoever. And I'm going to stop there. I'm sorry to all of the members and people in this, in, in their seats. I want to thank you for coming forward and being here. You're a very important part of our community and I want to thank you personally. But when people can't talk and get cut off, then we're not living in what I believe, a transparent community. And I'm going to stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Mr. Duval?
So, fellow member Novaks, you know, you make these statements every year at these, these town meetings and you leave it wide open like there's some kind of conspiracy or people are holding things back. And that is totally untrue. So could you please be more specific in regards to what accusations you're making? And when you do that as a board member and you approve the Glen project, you need to go on the floor as a town meeting member because you already voted for this, with the select board, is to go, go as a town meeting member and discuss it from the floor, is the way it should work. But anyways, what is the, what is the, you know, I hear this every year. Let's, let's talk about, what's the issues?
Okay, I, I'm, Mr. Duval, I'm very tired of that coming from you every time I speak. And here's what I'm saying.
All right.
Chapter 90, 50, the revolving fund.
Sure.
Okay, so the revolving fund already, our town administrator is the spending authority for bid specification revolving fund. Our town administrator is the spending authority for, for promotional revolving fund. Our town administrator, along with the DPW director, is transfer station revolving fund. Along with the building commissioner is our town, our town administrator inspection service fund. Along with tax title revolving fund, our treasurer and our town administrator is, is involved. The Adams Visitor Center revolving- and our town administrator is involved. The Adams Visitor Center revolving fund, town administrator. Adams Memorial Building revolving fund, town administrator. Now, we're going to vote to allow our town administrator to oversee the revolving fund of the Greylock Glen, the biggest project that this town has seen in a long time. And I think this is a Town of Adams project. And I think that whatever happened to the Greylock Glen Commission, I can tell you what happened. That's what took me a long time to go through it. Why aren't we in this commission? We had the time to do it, and we didn't.
It died at houseways and means.
Okay, okay, okay. Board of Selectmen?
Okay.
Come post yourself. Mr. Duval?
Joe, there was a lot there, okay? But I'll try my best to give a summary of what our goals are as a community. So the town administrator, through the charter, works for the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, along with town meeting here, approves these articles. They're all out there for review. They're all out there for discussion. And the town meeting has final say on these accounts that we generate. So there's several here. So that's, there's transparency, right? But again, the selectmen hire the town administrator to run the day-to-day operations of our community based on our charter, okay? So that's why you mentioned his name several times, with the ratification of the select board, and then Finance Committee recommendation, and then, in the end, town meeting approval. So there's, I'm not sure where the transparency isn't there, but it's all, every year, we vote on these articles. What we're trying to do is, for example, I talked about this before, but, for example, the transfer station, right? Our goal is to have the users of the transfer station pay the total cost of the transfer station. So why should somebody who doesn't use it pay taxes on the transfer station if they don't use it?
Point of order. This is not, point of order.
Mr. Novak, your point of order.
This is not on the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Duval, I'm going to ask you to kind of wrap it back to the article on the table. I know you have points you want to make, but I'm holding everybody to the articles.
Okay. So that's, overall, I can take transfer station specifically, but that's for all of the accounts that we generate, the money, like the Greylock Glen, the money is going to, that is generated, the positions that we have identified, and we have individuals working up there, will be paid by the funds we receive from rental agreements, from tourist spending money. So we're trying to put these in buckets where if the, those that use it, pay for it. The Greylock Glen, the money coming in from all of the, let's say, the meals tax, for example, will go to that. The Economic Development Fund, the money that goes into that is paying, help pay the director's wages for this year, but eventually, over three years, we're going to have all the wages paid by money that's coming in. So that's why we're doing this. And any other questions I'd be glad to answer?
Thank you, Mr. Duval. And Mr. Cowie, one minute, because Ms. Hoyt wants just to be recognized first. Then, Mr. Cowie, come on up to the microphone.
As Mr. Novak has asked a question as to why the town administrator would have the authority with the revolving accounts, I will point out that the charter and related acts, in Section 13, the town administrator shall be the chief fiscal officer of the town. Warrants for the payment of town funds prepared by the town accountant in accordance with the provisions of Section 56 of Chapter 41 of the general laws shall be submitted to the town administrator. The approval of any such warrant by the town administrator shall be sufficient authority to authorize payment by the town treasurer, but the selectmen shall approve all warrants in the event of a vacancy in the office of town administrator. So the authority for the revolving fund sits with the town administrator based on our charter and related acts. I will also point out that our town administrator, our town accountant, both are certified by the state. They are Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Officials. Members of the Board of Selectmen sitting here in front of you do not have that certification. We have not gone through that extensive training. The individuals at the end of this table have, and they do work for the Town of Adams, knowing what the general laws are, and they work in accordance with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoyt. Mr. Cowie, all right, it's going to be Mr. Cowie, Mr. Corgan, and then Ms. Parsons. And then I'll get right over to you, Bruce. You're going to yield? All right, Mr. Cowie is yielding to Mr. Corgan.
I'm a little confused.
Okay.
I've been through all these articles, and except for bylaw changes and easements, we have looked at specific dollar amounts, except for this one.
Okay.
And I go back to, you go back and look at Article 20, there's a list of revolving accounts. And it could, they go from $5,000 to $90,000. We don't know what the hell we're voting for. I went to a workshop on Wednesday night, and I asked the question, how much money is going to go into this account? And what I was told is, I don't know. How can we, as a body, vote on an article that's open-ended? It can be 90,000. It could be 5,000. We don't know.
Mr. Corgan, I believe you were told on Wednesday night, too, that the purpose of this article is to establish this fund.
Right.
I know.
Mr. Green.
I know to establish, but what we
We are not appropriating money.
Shouldn't we have a guideline to whether we should establish it? If you want 90,000, maybe we shouldn't.
I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Green to further explain what he explained to you Wednesday night.
Okay.
Town meeting members are being asked tonight to create a revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, 53 E and 1/2. That creates the establishment of a revolving fund. The Town of Adams financial plan for the Greylock Glen is for it to be, similar to the transfer station, a self-sustaining enterprise. In order to do that, we have to isolate the revenue coming in from our proposed income generation proposals. The rental of the outdoor center, the Mass Audubon, as the educational provider, and with Grace, a restaurant operator, who will be paying also to use the building. Eventually, we're going to, the selectmen are going to be asked to implement a fee and usage schedule for all of Greylock Glen, for weddings and things along those lines. The intent is for all of those items, all of that income, to be put into the revolving account. In any given year, town meeting will then be asked to spend, just like in Article 20, no more than that amount. That is your authorization given to you by that enabling statute. We will not be able to spend more than that. The reason why you don't see that tonight is because we have no income in the revolving account. We need to establish it first. And although I would love to tell you, in year one of operation of the outdoor center, we'll have $1 million in it, I can't, because we don't know. As everyone else has said, the Greylock Glen is a great unknown, but we are working hard to make it revenue generating. That is Executive Director Mike Nguyen, Mike and the turquoise, give a wave. That is Director Nguyen's job, is to monetize the Greylock Glen, so we can achieve the dreams that the town has had for the last many years. The first step, in order to make this self-sustaining, is to create a revolving account. We do not intend to spend any money in fiscal year 25 from the revolving account, because we don't know when any money is going to go in it, nor can I tell you what any of the rental agreements will be, because they haven't happened yet. However, in fiscal 26, I would anticipate, under Article 20, or whatever article number that will occur at that time, a spending cap. That spending cap will be determined by Executive Director Nguyen, myself, and the Finance Director at some point, when we have an idea of what we need to spend out of it, just like the transfer station. That $90,000 number is because we spend annually just about $82,000, $83,000, $84,000 out of it. Eventually, I would also say that that revolving fund is going to go away, and the Greylock Glen will have an enterprise fund, similar to what we talked to about the sewer enterprise. What is the distinction, you may be asking? Revolving account, money just comes in, money goes out from it, we pay bills from it. That's why, as Ms. Hoyt, I'm listed on everything in terms of the position of town administrator. So the enterprise fund eventually will have a specific budget for Greylock Glen operation, but we are on the verge of launching it. We just don't have that data. But you're being asked, very simply, in Article 23, to create a revolving fund, so we begin to isolate any money coming in, and eventually, over time, any bills get paid out of that and off the tax levy. But we have to start somewhere, so this is the first step.
My question is, why we didn't come up with a small arbitrary number to start to put into this article? That way, we can, we have a little control over how much the account is going to grow next year?
You have full control now, because we can't spend a dime, because we don't have authorization to spend from it.
Anything else, Mr. Corgan?
No, I guess that...
Thank you. Ms. Parsons? And that's your entertainment for this evening.
Thank you.
And just so you know, you don't have to touch the microphone. I'm adjusting the volume over there.
Okay. I'm still on this item.
So, Ms., just can you identify your name and your precinct, please?
Diane Parsons, Precinct 1. And I'm a relative newcomer to Adams, and I want to thank everybody in Town Hall who's been so forthcoming. I want to say that I understood by looking in my old folder that there was an article a year ago, actually, in April of 2023, about a Greylock Glen Commission. So I did ask about that. And my one question I will ask at the end of my statement about transparency and giving information about the Glen. I actually spent time with your town administrator, and the town accountant, and Mr. Nguyen, and Donna Saison, last week, where I got a lot of information, because a friend of mine who lives in the neighborhood of the Glen had asked a lot of questions. And what I found that they were very forthcoming in answering was money that expenditures and sources of income for the Glen. And I think Mr. Cowie and Mr. Corgan might feel better about having this information as well. What I want to say is, finding out about the commission, I tried to ask a little bit about the commission as well, because it was mentioned in an editorial in April of 2023. So my big question, because I also brought it up to the Chair of the Select Board, is when will there be a commission to offer assistance to the town administrator? Because I think what I'm hearing is, people, A, don't have enough information, and B, maybe it ought to be a broader group that's making future decisions. Now, because I read this editorial, I contacted the state rep to say, gee, I see you filed a bill. I want to know if that's still functioning. He said, no. I said, why not? He said, town meeting has to pass it again. Apparently, town meeting passed in 2020 to establish a Greylock Glen Commission. So my question now is, when will it be established, and who will be included? Thank you.
Mr. Green, or someone? Mr. Duval, thank you.
I'll start, and I'll let Christine, who was the chair, former chair from last year. The original intent of the commission, first talking 10 years ago, and the rep was there at the time, and others, was that the representatives on this commission would be those that would have influence, that would have ways to raise funds, to bring in developers throughout with their connections. It was really more towards the raising of funds for the future than the phases that are left remaining. They would be a support group that would do that. Yes, it was submitted by the representative, and the board from, and this is my own opinion, but based on the history for the last 75 years up until this point, that nothing really has materialized up there. So right now, with the, you know, with the last few years, with the town administrator, his team and the board, we have, we've had success, and might be luck or miracle, whatever it may be, but we've had success. And the outdoor center, which hopefully most of you have taken advantage of the tour that was offered recently, that we're going to see that through. And we've been having good success with it, and it's going to happen, first time really ever it's going to happen, with this setup that we have today. And we're going to move on to the next phase of the campground, and get that situated. But at some point, yes, we will decide, you know, just me, just, I want to see it happen. I want to make sure this happens. It's been too long, that the commission most likely will be, we'll put that request in the town meeting, we'll go with the state house, and we'll get that approved. But at this point, we're seeing it through to make sure it happens. And it is happening. So I think, I believe in that process. And when it gets to a point that you get into Phase 3 and 4, we're most likely going to be looking for some help. But we just want to get this started, momentum started.
I understand that the goal for opening is Labor Day this year, and I understand that is a goal. So you think perhaps by town meeting next year, you might be ready to at least explore?
So there's been a lot of misinformation about the Greylock Glen Commission. So let me just give everybody a little context. The intent of Greylock Glen, going back about 20 years, at least the way that the Town of Adams has visioned it, and the way that we're embarking on it, is very similar to the way that Mass Moca was created. That is, the city of North Adams began Mass Moca as a city initiative. And it took time. It took hands-on efforts by, at the time, Mayor Barrett and many other people within the city, to allow that to have a genesis, to have a birth. When it became self-sustaining, or marginally self-sustaining, eventually, the commission is created. There's been a lot of discussion about financial control. If a commission is created, town meeting loses financial control over Greylock Glen expenditures. There would be no reason for a revolving account. There would be no reason to discuss it. But yet, right now, we require tax income, tax levy, in order to get the Glen up and running. Therefore, it is most appropriate that as long as we have to use tax dollars, either paying for staff or paying for some operating costs, until it begins to generate its own money, accountability rests with the town staff, with the select board, and finally, year over year, with town meeting. The intent of the commission is to allow it to be a self-sustaining, self-managing enterprise. When that day comes, there will be no discussion with this body about Greylock Glen. It'll be completely independent. And at that time, there should be not one dime of taxpayer dollars going to it, because it is unclear as to the number of people that would sit on the commission, or the appointing authority. And frankly, also, some developers have told us, particularly Shared Estates, which is due to invest $15 million, excuse me, $15 million into that campground, and I would presume the same would be true for a potential developer building the hotel, that they would prefer not to meet with a committee, where decisions are being made by votes or by committees, which could bog down development. At this point, as much as town government can be, and we have those discussions all the time, and as difficult as it is for a small town like Adams to develop this enterprise, we're being as nimble as we can in order to make for attractive development up there, which is the goal. So there will be a time and a place to hand this off. I can assure you, I would love to do that as soon as possible. It's challenging, and it's fun, but it is really, to a certain extent, outside of what the Town of Adams does. But we need to do it. As Member Duval said, the town has waited for it. We're on the cusp of it. And right now, allowing the authority to remain with the select board and with town staff, we're able to move quickly. When it becomes self-sustaining, and we have achieved the goal of the vision, whether that's just the campground and the outdoor center, or hopefully, a large developer, then will be the time to discuss bringing on a commission. And what that looked like several years ago, when it was first conceived in a vacuum without anything concrete, it may change. And I think it's important for the town to get some operational data in order to determine what is the best governance structure there. Because at this point, if you take one wrong step, it could all fall apart. So I hope that So I hope that gives everybody just a little bit of context as to what the intent of the commission is. But now is not the time, now is not the place for it. And I don't know if there's, go ahead.
Okay. So before we go back to you, Mr. Chairman, and I will get to you, I did promise Mr. Shapley. And then I'll get back to you.
Bruce Shapley, Precinct 3. Just very briefly, when I, when I look at this article, we're not asking to create something new. We're adding to, add this revolving fund, as there are many other revolving funds out there. We put faith in the administrator who's been hired by the select board, which the town voting members have elected to sit in the position. I don't think there's ever been a question of misappropriation. There is no appropriation of funds on this article because there's none generated yet. And like any resolving, revolving fund or enterprise fund, I know from my 40 years here, that if I want those numbers, I'm going to be able to see them. And if there are any questions about it, those questions can be asked. The other insurance piece about any spending that goes on in any municipality is the audits done by the state for the fairness of our taxpayer dollars. So I'd like to leave it with this, that we're not asking to create anything new here. We're just adding one more responsibility to the town administrator. As an aside, in my 40 years here, I think this is a very exciting time that we have an administrator with an administration that he is hand-selected to, with a vision that, again, at the town annual meeting, we appropriated funds to go ahead and take that risk. And we hope that that risk is, will follow through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shapley. And Chairman Duval?
And just to end my comments, and my concern is, with a commission, the Town of Adams needs revenue, right? We all know that. Tax rates going up, we need to have revenue. We need to build revenue in this community. So one way to do that, for example, the campground is offered a $70,000 a year, and they've offered a 7% of the profits. All right? So that's what we're going to receive to help with the revenue and the tax base. If you get a commission involved, how much does the town get? Unknown territory. So that's why, that's why I've been not pushing for that commission yet, because we need to have that iron out. But we're going to be receiving these funds to be able to use, to help with our tax base and to help keep our tax rate under control. So that's my, my opinion.
All right. Any other comments, questions on Article 23, to establish this revolving fund? Seeing none, Mr. Mezawar moves the Finance Committee's recommendation that the town vote to accept the article as written, seconded by Mr. Byrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So moved. Article 24, the Economic Development Fund, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Economic Development Fund a sum of money to be used for fiscal year 2025 expenses. $80,000 for the payroll expense of the Executive Director of the Greylock Glen Outdoor Center from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, or take any other action in relation thereto. You will note the balance of the Economic Development Fund as of April 29, 2024 is $161,883, held by Mr. Cowie. You're already, so you're withdrawing? All right. Any, thank you. Any other questions on Article 24? Seeing none, Mr. Mezawar moves the Finance Committee's recommendation that the town vote to accept this article as written, seconded by Ms. Cuscinetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing no further business to come before the annual meeting, Mr. Mezawar, oh, Mr. Cowie? Right up here.
I would like to make a request. We used to put online the adopted budgets. It wasn't here this year, and a lot of what was in here probably could have been answered. But we can't all go to the selectmen's meetings, we can't go to the finance committee meetings. I'm not on the finance committee meeting anymore, so the only way I'm going to get my information is if you put it online. Why can't you do it? You get the little popsicle stick, you stick it in, and you run it up, right?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cowie. Put that little nudge right in there at the end. All right. Seeing no further business to come before the town meeting, Mr. Mezawar moves the town meeting be dissolved, seconded by Mr. Byrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you and good night.